This is Brad Marchand and you're listening to Breaking the Ice with Josh Dolan. I don't think he would ever let a pizza get out the door before he buried the whole thing, so he likes to eat that kid.
Town meeting on Breaking the Ice, what's going on guys?
Hey, what's going on?
Hey, hey.
Why are there two Josh Dolans?
Is there still?
Yeah, it's still there, bub.
Maybe the question is...
It's not online, I don't know how to get rid of that.
Maybe click on the... Oh, you can't even see it, that's weird. Whoa, now there's a lot of all of us.
It's like a Russian doll situation, just keeps getting smaller and smaller and smaller.
It's like a My Penis situation.
Nice.
Wait, can we say that on this podcast?
Absolutely.
What kind of podcast is this?
You can say too much.
Say too much?
Want to make sure I can make fun of my own dick on this podcast.
You can.
That's all we've been doing before you got here Luke, was just roasting each other's peas. I'm gonna go ahead and say pea, too.
Pretty bad, like Russ was giving us...
Your audio's cutting out again, Mike.
I know, you got good cracks going too and we can't hear them.
It's like you're on Jerry Springer and they're bleeping you.
Yeah.
Like the way they would just cut the audio out?
Are you on wifi?
Yeah.
How's your... Do you have unlimited? How's your cell connection sometimes if you go to the old cell? Damn, yeah, we didn't hear anything you just said there either.
I don't want to lose anybody here, hold on a second.
I think the problem is he's not in his car.
Yeah.
That's the spot.
The famous car.
What's the car's name? Karen or something like that?
Barbara.
Barbara.
It's Barbara, thank you. Alright, switch to cellular, um, now I can't see any of you guys.
We can hear you a lot better, your audio's not cutting out anymore.
Oh, there he is.
Alright, okay.
Beautiful.
That seems better for a bit, for now, yeah.
Alright, and now we're on our way, but yeah, to what you were saying Luke, um, you can say whatever you want, it's not like regular radio and... Like what we... I was on the Town Meeting podcast last night and we were talking about like the current state of radio and the industry and like the music industry and how it's all kind of hurting right now and like when AAF went off the air, Mike Shu, you were talking about this a lot, that like there's no place to like break new bands or like highlight new bands that like you're a fan of and you want other people to hear it and so this is kind of like the new space to do it is podcasting, like us radio people are like, "Go listen to Town Meeting."
Well, um, if I could just say that, um, oh, unfortunately, there's way more places now than just radio to discover new music although right now I think more people are still discovering new music on radio, but that number's getting less and less every day and you've got um, all the streaming services, you know, I listen to you guys on Spotify and uh, you know, you've got YouTube, uh, there's so many other places to get your music right now. Even if, if all the radio stations that played any kind of new music went away, um, there still would be another 50 places you could get new music and that's part of why radio's going away. New sprint is that, you know, there's, there's just so many more options and possibly, you know, maybe better options uh, to get your music and stuff like that. Do you guys, like, you guys, do you work radio at all or do you just just keep your stuff online, go to the streaming services?
I, I would love to work radio, but I mean, it's, it's just not even a thing, like even college radio stations don't play new music anymore. I used to listen to uh, ERS, it was 88, 9, I think they're still uh, I think they're still, it's still uh, at the Emerson radio station, but they don't... We've sent them so much shit and they just, they don't play new music anymore, they don't play, they used to be all local stuff and now it's, it's nothing.
Yeah, every once in a while...
College radio, place where the new music would start.
Right.
And one traction to college radio, I mean, back when I was young, about 600 years ago, but once, oh, yeah, uh, you know, gave it some traction, then commercial radio would say, "Well, this is getting a lot of college airplay, maybe we should try that." You know, that's too bad, college stations are kind of giving up, especially ERS was such a huge and influential station back in the day.
I loved ERS.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it seemed to be, it used to be a little more like, um, it would play newer, more like local indie sort of stuff. The best we, luck we had in the past few years as far as radio was just like there, every once in a while a show would have like a local spotlight or a homegrown fucking whatever, you know, and it's like, these are, this artist is from around here, like we were on the fucking country station that, whatever that one.
The Bull? You guys were on the Bull, right?
We were on 102.5, I like that one, two years ago for their local spotlight with Carolyn Cruz, she was super nice. You guys know her? Is that the same building as you guys or formerly? No?
No, we had no country stations.
And then we were, the only other college station we were on was on, um, which was actually my favorite radio station but in, was uh, W U M B, which was UMass Boston, because they play a lot of like folky stuff anyway, so that, we, we were on there and I know some people became fans because of that. Um, I think ERS might have played us once Luke on one of those local...
No, they came to a main festival we were doing and they wrote an article about us because we played with that youth rock orchestra and I was like, "Oh, cool, they'll play our music now" and then they were like, "No, no, we're not gonna play your music."
Yeah, yeah, they got a little, they got a little more like sort of, uh, they went into more of like the mainstreamy stuff, less of the...
I do miss, I will say, it is kind of cool talking to you Mike, because I listened to you like a long time ago. Back, I was, me and Josh were talking about this a little bit yesterday, but I used to listen to Hillman when I was landscaping, probably 10, 12 years ago and you and Barbary were my favorite parts of that show. You actually weren't on the show at the time, you were the, I think you were the 10 o'clock, but you guys always had like a little go-between and uh, I don't know. It's kind of cool to talk to you now.
Thanks man, yeah, I mean, I, I love, you know, that was a lot of fun, it was chaos, it was, it was crazy at times, but I'll tell you, Kevin Barbary, I, he may be uh, one of the most talented guys I've ever worked with, he's, he's what I call the...
Fucking funny.
The five-tool player, does a hundred, he writes, he produces stuff, he could take uh, like Greg Hill could write an idea down on a, on like a cough, of like a dunk snap and give it to Kevin would go into the next production room and 15 minutes later come back with a fully produced bit. And I'd never seen anything like, in person, like working anywhere, I'd worked before AAF and, and it's, that's something I never understood why they fired Kevin Barbary, that never...
Yeah, I remember it was weird, it, it was like not a word about it, he was gone and then I remember everyone was calling in and asking Hillman where Kevin was and he's like, "I just, I had nothing to do with this, it was just, they just dropped it on my lap this morning" or something like that, but uh...
Josh?
What's that?
That's all, like all of a sudden it's the long weekend, alright, let's get back to work and then, oh yeah, we sold you guys, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that's how it usually is and then, but I mean, like, like, we were talking, right? It's like, we were talking about on your podcast, um, yesterday that, like, that's how it usually goes, is like you guys are fired and then nobody's allowed to address it and we were allowed to say goodbye for a week, I mean, two days, but I mean, we, we were still on the air for a week.
Yeah, and then you were allowed to get blackout drunk on the air, I believe.
Whatever.
Josh was, yeah, Josh like just, just drank everything that, meanwhile, Harry and I stayed sober the whole time because we actually had to work.
You were the anchors, okay?
He's a terrible drunk, as you guys...
Because I worked at AAF.
So, uh, when I used to work in the morning, I would drive in and I would listen to BZ and Bradley J and was it your dad?
Oh wow, yeah, our dad and our uncle, they, yeah, they uh, they used to always call in. I think, I think, I think Brad, I think they still do, I know my...
Well Bradley's off the air now.
Oh, is he?
Yeah, same thing that happened to AAF, happened to, that whole portion of BZ, they're all gone now. I remember dad and Doug fucking cried their eyes, so, not really, but I mean, maybe they did.
But didn't Bradley J call Doug like Christian Doug or something like that?
Something weird like that.
Doug's your uncle, is that right?
Yeah, he's my dad's twin brother.
Okay, so Doug, Bradley J would get into religious discussions and would talk to Doug and Doug was, um, he believed the Bible, like, he took the Bible literally, is that correct?
That's very, very correct. Probably, yeah, but even, like that's even possible, but...
Wasn't pretty, anything about it and he wasn't, he wasn't aggressive, he was just, him and Bradley would get into discussions and he would be there to say, "Well, the Bible says this." That's why I enjoyed listening to Bradley J, because the discussions were actual discussions, but it wasn't yelling at each other, but he would mention you guys all the time. Where are you?
Which is really cool.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Right, and so that's how I first heard of you guys.
That's wild.
So funny.
Uh, we missed that part, Mike, sorry.
Yeah, what'd you say, Mike, sorry?
You got plenty of radio play, just not your music.
Yeah, so our, our dad and our uncle, they're twin brothers and they both work for the same trucking company, Bursaw in Acton and so they're up at like 1, 2 AM and my dad would always say like, "Hey, if you're up at 3 AM this morning, we're gonna be talking to Bradley about your band" and I'm like, "Why the hell would I be up at 3 AM?"
He had me do it once, I did it once.
Well, there's a lot of truckers up at that time, so they're driving those people to your Spotify or your MySpace, whatever year it was.
Yeah, dad had me, dad had me call in once and I like talked to him and everything and Bradley like talked to me and like he talked to me about the band for a second, but then he just wants to know about what, how I, like, how, where I was religiously and he was like, "Are you like your uncle and your dad as far as church?" and I was like, "No, not anymore." It was kind of awkward.
Is this a religious show?
I don't think so, right, it's, he just talks, he just, yeah, he just like has discussions, like Mike was saying, he just like, but because Doug and dad are religious, that, that's what they would always talk about, especially Doug, I'm assuming, but... Um, yeah, and he like, all Bradley wanted to talk to me about was, was, was uh, what's it like since you know, your, your dad and your uncle are still pretty religious, it doesn't seem like you are and I was like, "Oh, this is great, thanks for..." You know, like dad wanted me to call in to talk about the band and then, then I'm sitting there being like, "Yeah, I'm not like religious like my dad and my uncle anymore."
Well, that was the great thing about Jay, he wasn't afraid to, to talk religion and he did it in a way where it wasn't a shouting match and it wasn't, "Well, I believe this and you believe that," he was like kind of open to all ideas, he just wanted it all explained to him. And your uncle Doug was, I, you know, for my time listening to him and I heard a lot of him driving in the morning.
That's so funny, yeah, that's wild.
Explaining it, you know, in a way where I didn't feel like I was being, you know, it wasn't being forced on me or I was preached to, you know, so and, but that's how I mainly heard of you guys, he talked about you guys all the time, it was great.
That's cool, did you ever end up like looking us up or you, at that time?
Oh yeah, like after a while, I know what these Town Meeting guys are all about, because their uncle's always on the radio when I'm driving.
That is so funny to me, because you just think, like they would talk about Bradley J all the time and in my mind, I'm like, "No one knows who this guy is because he's on at these hours that only truckers and a few people are listening to him," but a fucking AAF DJ was listening to him on the way into...
People that work in the morning are driving to work at that time.
Yeah.
There, there's cops and stuff awake at that time.
Yeah.
That's so funny.
Bars and nightclubs and stuff like that and then plus, it was BZ, so you could get Bs, not only are they online, but like the AM signal at night. You know, I don't know if you know, like when it, the, the atmosphere actually changes, I think this is how it works, so the AM signal bounces off the atmosphere and then bounces off the earth and it goes actually farther, so listening to him on actual radio, you know, like in Virginia and New York and Pennsylvania, Ohio and stuff like that. Um, so he actually reached way more people than just the Boston area.
That's wild, yeah, yeah, we always, he would, yeah, because they, we'd always hear him be like, "Yo, we're talking to Bradley J." "Yeah, I was talking to Bradley J today and..."
This whole time, we're, we're, we're thinking it's our music, our music is, is what's doing it and getting us out there, it's just our uncle talking to Bradley J and that's, that's why we stream so well in fucking Colorado.
Yeah, right, or even fucking, what was the other one, Vietnam, don't we know Taiwan or something?
Taiwan, we do, Taiwan they love...
Number one, are, like on Spotify, you can look at like your analytics for like where you stream really well.
Yep.
So when we were, we did this thing like, uh, before the world ended where we were playing in Texas and then we decided like, "Oh, where, where should we go since we're like kind of out here?" So we like looked at Spotify and figured out where we stream really well and Denver was like number two.
People who smoke weed a lot love fucking Town Meeting.
Love our bands, so apparently in fucking Taiwan, they, they love us too though, so, but we couldn't really fit that into the Texas trip, we couldn't make it to Taiwan and...
Yeah, Breaking the Ice for some reason does very well in Istanbul.
Is that true?
Yeah.
Dude, that's so weird how that shit works. Do you know why?
No, I don't even know where that is.
So, so here's the thing that's kind of cool, if you stream, uh, I mean, streaming gives you fucking shit money. You don't make any money off of streaming, everyone knows that, it's universally known, but if you stream in other countries, it's some, some, in some countries it's worth two, three or four times what it's worth in the United States, so because we're doing what... In Taiwan, they love that song, "New Hampshire" that we play, I have, again, no...
Of that song.
Well, apparently all the Taiwanese people do too, so they uh, but we do, we do fairly well, not fairly well, like better than we had for the first two or three years we were on Spotify, because they're listening to "New Hampshire" a shit ton in Taiwan, so thank you.
What does "New Hampshire" mean in Taiwan?
It's like that episode of The Simpsons where Homer's on the...
And kind of like the Wild West, I bet, you know, back in the, back in the day, you know, when people dreamed of cowboys and stuff, but now they just dream of tax-free liquor and cigarettes.
And Hampton Beach.
What's funny that you mentioned that, because my, my father's from Taiwan, I'm, I'm half Taiwanese and I smoke a shit ton of pot, so I'm writing your demo.
You are.
Like, right in the center of your demo.
We've been trying to get you for a while, Shu, so...
Yeah.
Well, you got me, you got those two new songs up on Spotify, which are awesome.
Thanks man, yeah, we're, this album, uh, we're like, we love it, yeah.
Dude, I listen to it every day, not that I have a copy of it or anything, but um, yeah, it's...
It's alright, you're, you're a personality, Josh, you're allowed to have.
Oh, whatever.
You can give Shu a full copy too, we, that's fine.
Okay, cool, I'll send it to him.
He's half Taiwanese, so...
Yeah, he's, he's got some Taiwan in him, so he, he's allowed to...
I, I, oh, go ahead.
We missed it again, Shu.
I'm sorry, I said, "I gotta call my family over there and see if they've heard of you guys."
Yeah. You call, yeah, you call them up, it's playing in the background.
Russell, if I ask you guys, you mentioned like before the world ended.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, every, like gigs lined up, you know, and stuff like that, it all just came to an end and do you, do you guys do this full-time or do you have side jobs? Like, how is this affecting your, your lives right now?
I don't know, you want me to go first Luke or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mine's, mine's way more depressing.
Yeah, you, you got fucked way more than me.
Yeah, I guess it's your perspective, but, um, so my side gig was painting houses and like, so yeah, as far as, um, as far as like shows, everything, that, it was like that week, right around, um, St. Patrick's Day, it was like, right, like that 12-ish, 12, 13-ish that week before, because we had shows lined up for that weekend and like one of them was, was gonna be like a, a decent paycheck, I mean, for what we do, it would have been like, we were all kind of relying on that, you know, but we had, I think, was it two or three shows lined up?
Three.
Yeah, three shows that weekend, so like that's, you know, that's something that I'm, I rely on and then that was just like slowly the venue started canceling and then it was like, "Oh, music is done," you know, like, this is, this is over and like a little bit, like a weekish before that, um, I work with my friend and we, we paint houses and he's the one that kind of gets all the jobs and he was...
Wait, 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 you paint houses?
Yeah, uh, look behind you, Robert De Niro. Um, yeah, and uh, so it was like, like a weekish before everything like ended, I think people started kind of seeing it in the news like and kind of getting the vibe and so like we had a couple of jobs lined up and they, they dropped on us and then it was the same thing with music, it was like, oh, before you knew it, nobody wanted anyone in their house and, you know what I mean, so it was kind of one of those things. Like I think there are some people that are still painting, but probably like not for the good, you know, like not the quality, not like, I don't know, it's, it's one of those things where it just like, for what we do and for kind of what we charge, it, it wasn't something that people sort of thought was essential. Um, so, yeah, I don't have any work and, um, can't get, can't get unemployment, like nothing like that, so, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty fucked. So I'm figuring, I'm trying to figure out ways, uh, to kind of make something happen online as far as, I don't know, I might, I might try to do like a Zoom show and have it be like a ticketed thing where you pay to get in, to see me play music, I don't know. There's, there's a bunch of different ways, there's also just a lot of people playing online, playing live and it's, and it's just another way for people to just get your shit for free though, which is already what it is, you know, like, that's the, one of the shittiest things about this is like now people are listening to music so much more, but the artists don't see any of that, you know what I mean, it's just going to the Spotify CEO or whatever, you know what I mean, or, I mean Jeff Bezos now is even more well-off, you know, like that type of shit. It, so, it is frustrating because now people are taking in more entertainment, but we're not really reaping any of those benefits because you know, we don't, we don't really see that, so I'm, I'm trying to figure something out, but it's, it's a process, it's a lot of online shit figuring stuff, I had to drill down and get an ethernet cord all the way to my laptop just to make like these meetings have a better quality. You know, it's, it's a whole, it's a lot, but we're, I mean, we're doing, we're making the best of it, we had done one live show where we were all together when this first started, which people, which people can still find, we went to like a warehouse studio space and
Russ.
Sanitized everything.
You know, we were one of the only, I think, two or three people that did that, because they shut that down.
Yeah, they had to shut that down too, yeah, so like the whole band got together and we went to like this warehouse studio thing, they had nice cameras, it was called
Weird Fish Productions.
Yeah, Weird Fish Productions, that's kind of the, the information there, but, um, and that got us some, some, uh, people could donate while they watched, but you were still able to watch, you know, so I kind of want to do something where it's like, if you want to see me play, you gotta pay to see me play, like you would a show, um, but...
Well, um, Josh, uh, you know, we do Patreon, I don't know if Josh can answer that, we make millions of dollars.
Millions.
Like, you know, I don't know what to do with all this cash.
Yeah.
I just started burning it to make room.
We, we actually as a band have a Patreon, so like, but the, the thing with that is it's like a monthly thing and it's split up between, you know, the fucking six of us, so like, like, you know, I got Venmo'd 30 bucks and like, yeah, that's cool, but...
Well, part of that, part of that is, alright, so it's patreon.com/townmeeting, we have all kinds of exclusive content, early releases and early, uh, podcasts and all kinds of shit, go to patreon.com/townmeeting, that's how you fucking plug Patreon.
And Town Meeting is also a Patreon of Breaking the Ice.
That's right, we are a proud, uh, patron of Breaking the Ice, even though it took me about two fucking days to figure out how to do it, because Josh has 35.
And Josh has, has an extra Josh Dolan on this call too.
Funny, yeah.
But so, so Russ, the main reason for that, we use our Patreon mostly for when we do, we go on tour or when we play a little further away, we, it's gas money, it, um, it helps with extracurricular stuff, you don't think about Airbnb's hotel rooms, fucking gear we need and uh, I mean, there's a million things, I'm listing just the things that came to my mind, but uh, we're using it to pay for publicity for this new album right now, it's already spoken for, but if this nonsense goes on for more than the next few months, you won't just get $30, it'll be more than that.
Well, no, I know, but I'm just saying, it's, you know, it's like, I don't have any other income, other, even, even that is, is great, it's something, it's better than nothing, which, you know...
But you can still go to that live stream and I think you can still contribute, it's, if you go to Stay at Home Live or Weird Fish Productions or it's on our, if you just scroll down on our Facebook page, it's there and uh, what, I think the arrangement we had was, it, we take 50% and 50% goes to Weird Fish and those guys got fucked really hard, because they're, they do sound for, uh, festivals, they do sound for private shows, like they, they're just a professional sound and lighting company and we, we've known those guys forever, they're some of our friends, they're just really good dudes and we're, like, musicians can go online and ask for tips, those guys, you can't go online and ask
Exactly.
For tips to be a sound engineering company, so if you go watch that show, we, you know, we, it's mostly originals, but we cover some dead, we cover one of our favorite Neil Young songs, like it's, there's a lot of good shit there, so go check that out if you're into Neil Young. Shu, I think you're Neil Young.
Love Neil Young.
Yeah, he's my favorite man, he's my favorite artist.
Want to ask you guys a Neil Young question, um, because he's got, how many albums does he have, I'd say about a thousand?
I think a thousand and one, something like that.
But, you know, like, I know you guys are big fans, so what Neil Young do you like? Like what period of Neil Young are you guys into?
Okay, Russ, can I start?
Sure, yeah.
Uh, all and above, like every, literally everything, even like the stuff that people don't really like, so the, we, at the end of last year for our New Year's Eve show, we did a show at the Bull Run, which is near our house, and then we did another show where we just played Neil Young songs and uh, I mean, we covered like pretty much the whole catalog, Russ knows more Neil than I do, but I mean, every time we would play a song, me and Russ would kind of look at each other in the eye and we, our eyes would just say, "Fucking Neil, man." We've seen him twice together, once with a full band and then once just him and I think both times we literally cried and I, I don't even, I'm not ashamed of that at all, I fucking love Neil Young, I think After the Gold Rush is my favorite album. Uh, Harvest, probably my second, I know that's probably cliche, I don't know.
Well, no, they're great albums, there's no denying it.
I mean, that, that's like, that's classic stuff and I, I fucking love it, I mean, After the Gold Rush is obviously, for me, it's like top five albums of all time, it's, you can't go wrong, same thing with like, I mean Harvest, and then like Harvest Moon dude, that's like, that's like 90s, but it's like fucking, it's, it's just got great songs on it and then like, even though people will give him shit for like, a lot of the like stuff where he's basically just singing about Monsanto and like fuck corporations and stuff.
It's great.
But for me, it's like there, if you listen to some of those songs, there's some fucking killer like guitar shit going on in a lot of those albums, like...
Even the one he put out, uh, in 2019, Colorado?
Oh yeah.
It's fucking great.
Yeah, there's some awes- like, and, and he'll just, that's one of my favorite thing about Neil and I know it's, whatever, like Luke said, cliche sort of things, but Neil just does not give a fuck, like this, he, he's Neil and that's it and like, there's no, there's no playing to anything, he's not like trying to be, he's just fucking...
He'll go on stage with the same clothes he did yard work in.
Yeah, exactly, covered in fucking dirt and shit like he...
So he's, but the other thing too is like, so me and Russ have also seen Dylan and I, I, Dylan's one of my favorite songwriters ever.
Didn't you guys open for him?
Whatever you're supposed to say, we did the, we did the side stage, on paper, we say we opened for, we didn't open for him.
We didn't meet him or anything, but...
If it gets us into a bigger venue, sure, we open for Bob Dylan, but uh, we, um, but when you, when we did the side stage up in Guilford, we got to go watch him and I, again, love Bob Dylan, Blood on the Tracks, one of my favorite albums ever, live, he might have been the worst artist I've ever seen.
Yeah.
Neil, Neil, the first time we saw Neil, it was with, uh, who was it, Russ, it was Lucas Nelson's band? Yeah, Promise of the Real, but he came out, just him, and he did, he started with After the Gold Rush, he did it like a bunch of like kind of fan favors, I think he did A Man Needs a Maid and like just acoustic versions, just him on it and then after five, he was kind of like shaky a little bit and then he brought the whole band out and he grabbed an electric and I've never seen anyone like murder like Neil Young did, it was unbelievable.
And he would just do like fucking 25 minute solos, you know, like he just didn't give a shit and you're just like, fuck, you know? And then we saw him, the other time we saw him, was that The Wang, Luke?
Yeah.
Yeah, which was just like that, I mean, I'm sure you guys have been in that room, like it's just that, the way that room is set up, the sound and everything, it's just the acoustics and it was just him and he had like fucking six kinds of pianos, he had like an organ and shit and like, he just went and played the organ and, and was like, "Well, I dream of..." It was like playing the fucking organ and it's just like, holy shit man, and the sound was just like, you know, it was incredible and he, and he did like some, uh, like Buffalo Springfield shit, just him on an electric, but he's just like stomping away and he's just like, yeah. Yeah, and I mean, though, there are those classic albums, but then like even something like, um, like On the Beach, uh, there's like fucking great songs on that album too, man, like For the Turnstiles, have you ever, have you, do you know that song? That song's fucking badass, it's like, he's got a banjo or, I mean, then there's like just certain, he's got shit that you don't even, you don't even realize, you know, that, yeah, he's just so versatile, but amazing and he, and he just does what he fucking wants to do.
What's yours, what's yours, Shu?
Him is that, he, he doesn't have a release schedule, like, sometimes it's like an idea, something in the news happens and he'll like pull album about it and just put it right out there and it's kind of like old, uh, folk singer thing where, you know, they're, they're singing about... And it's kind of like old, uh, folk singer thing where, you know, they're, they're singing about what's going on right then, at that time. And that's the kind of way that I see him releasing albums. And, but I just got a, I got a list of his albums up here and I have to, you know what? Landing on Water, really? I just, I can't even listen to that.
I think I have that on vinyl. Hold on.
I just, I don't know. It's, there's nothing about Neil Young, like, like the Lanois album. I don't know. I just couldn't, I couldn't get, like I could get into the Shocking Pink and some of those songs on Old Ways. You know, all that's, spent a lot of time trying not to be Neil Young and, uh,
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, there it is. Like, I just, I can't listen to.
It's not his best.
No, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing. Like I, I think for sure there are some of those albums that like, I'm not, that's, I'm not gonna, yeah. I, I, he's just, like you said though, he's got fucking so many of them, but I, I think there's always at least something on, on every album that I, that, that's listenable. For me at least, because I just love them.
I will, I'm gonna have to agree with a mic on this one. The Landing on Water is a rough.
Yeah, I know.
It's not the best. I'm trying, I'm looking at this, looking at the tracklist and trying to figure out any song. Maybe, maybe I got a problem, maybe. But even the album cover is kind of.
I was gonna say, even the album cover is pretty shitty.
It looks like the movie poster for The Naked Gun. I mean, Airplane, Leslie Nielsen, whatever.
Same thing.
I don't know, but that's, that's awesome. I mean, uh, you know, I can hear a lot of that in your music. I get a lot of like Neil Young in there. But then also, you know, I hear like stuff like Avet Brothers, you know, and The Burr, things like that. Do you guys mind that like Americana label?
I love it. No, I love it. Yeah. I'd rather it be that than fucking country. And not, and not because I don't like, I, I like country. I mean, this is also super cliche, but I like true country. I, I'm not like, when we were on one oh two five, I was like, I don't like that music that they play. You know, like I'm not, I'm not a big fan of, you know, the, the popular country music, but we sometimes get put in a country genre because Americana sort of flirts with those lines. But, and, and yeah, there are certain songs of ours that are totally more country bluegrass. So like when we're, when we're called Americana, that to me just, that's more, like that was what the band was. And another great idol of mine is Levon Helm. So like I love, I love being anywhere near that kind of, um, classification. Because, yeah, it's.
And also Amer- Americana now, I feel like Americana has grabbed like the fringe country, like Sturgill, Simpson and, um, like Jason Isbell, those guys. And I, anytime anyone describes us in that class, I get very excited. And I don't feel worthy of it, but I am like happy about it.
And it's also our new album too is, uh, it's definitely going to be a, like some people would say a departure. I, I think of it more as like an evolution because there's a lot more, like Tim is playing electric on this. He's doing some like cool heavy electric shit. He's got like a slide thing going. Uh, I'm playing full kit throughout the whole album, so there's no cajon on it anymore. There's no like box drum, so, um, it's just, it's, it's much more rockin'. I'm sure Josh can attest to like the difference between sonically the sound of this one compared to like If I Die or even, um, the From The Green album.
Yeah.
So it feels cool. Yeah, it feels cool to be, to be where we're at now and who knows where we'll be. Um, and I think a part of that is that Neil influence is that it's like a lot of our fans were pretty bummed out, you know, when certain changes happened in the band and like, oh, I want the cajon back or you know, whatever, because certain members left and there was things like that. But I think as a, as a unit as we are now, it feels really, really good to be just doing, making music that we, that we like, you know, that, that like, uh, it's fucking fun to play and like, we had a, an awesome time making the album. Like, you know, we recorded most of it live, like all together, like in our different little sections. And then, you know, you do the overdubs and shit, but like, doing the bass tracks together is just like, I don't know, it's fucking awesome. And we're, there's a lot of just like rocking out on it and having fun, fucking.
But you can tell that you like making the music that you like, because there's like some bands out there that I feel like they're making the music just to make music, or they're writing a song just to write a song, but every single one of you. Yeah, like they're trying to catch up to something, but you guys are try, you're just doing it for you. And I feel like that shows because you guys enjoy it. And like you said, like it's not, it's not different. It's still, the new album is, is you. Like it, this is the first one you use a drum set in, right? I, I know there was a few songs.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of songs like here and there and there's like, but not, no, nothing like this. Yeah, this is all the way through drums. Full kit, you know, like.
But yeah, you can definitely tell that it's like you guys like put everything behind. It's also weird that a lot of people don't know that we all grew up in the same town. We're all air kids. Not Mike Shue. Alright, uh, but like, Russ, like in, in school, you, Luke and Babe, you guys were never like in like music or like the band or anything, like you guys never like showcased that you were like this talented in school. Like I remember sometimes walking down the hall seeing like, you or like Babe, like beatboxing or like doing the harmonica or something, but like what, when, when did you guys decide like, oh, we're gonna like, make a band and like go for this? Cause you never showed it when we were growing up in air.
Yeah, um, I mean, yeah, no, not really. It, it, it was always there. I think a lot of it was just from my perspective.
Yeah, that's my, no, that's, that's money again, sorry.
It's Josh's.
Get over there. This is, I need a bigger house.
It sounded like somebody flushed the toilet there.
No, it's my dog.
Is that what he's doing? Is he taking a smash right now?
Luke's right, right off camera. There's a toilet right there.
Someone sneezed two towns over.
Yeah. Um, yeah, but no, I mean, like I, I, I did the jazz band with Mr. Tree for like a hot second. Um, but that wasn't, like you said, that's not like a showcasey type of thing. That was like fucking whatever. And I know Luke played sax actually in band. Uh, like in fucking middle school or something, um, a while back, but no, not like, compared to what you're talking about. No, there wasn't anything like that. I think, I think, um, it sort of started, so unfortunately, not unfortunately, it's, a lot of it was, most of that at outlet for me was church, like, cause
Yeah.
I grew up in the church and so I was playing drums in the church, doing backup vocals. And then like, Luke was actually the youth pastor for a while. And so Luke was playing song, he started writing songs at church to be like the cool youth guy with the guitar and shit. So like he was, Luke was playing, Luke was playing like his songs at church and I was drumming. Um, and then we sort of just got a vibe that like, oh, we could do some cool stuff together. Like when Luke started writing songs, I would do percussion and backup vocals for him. Um, and then it kind of started because um, I was playing percussion for this other, like this small little gathering, uh, it was like a, a guy and his daughter. Shout out to Pete and Mallory and.
It was called The Gathering Of The Juggalos.
Yeah, it was just like a small little ICP cover type of thing.
Russ is trying to say he's down with the clown until he's dead in the ground. He's not a juggalo. I got a lot of these. I'll stop.
Uh, yeah, but Josh, I think it really sort of started, cause I, and then I started writing songs. Uh, and then Luke and I, we got like that, that other group I was playing for, I was supposed to do percussion for them. And the, he couldn't do the show. And he was like, do you want to take over like you and Luke? And, and I like presented the idea to Luke and he was like, oh, that's like three hours. Like that's, you know, and we just decided we were gonna do it. So we just kind of came up with the name and fucking did the show. And then from there on, it, it, it's been what it is. So, yeah. Go ahead.
Where, where, where did the name come from? Because no matter what town you're going through, you guys get free advertising.
That's part of why, yeah, that's part of why.
So it was, it was twofold. I think one, like I was just, I, Russ was right. We, we grew up in the church and, um, I think we were both on the outskirts of, of leaving evangelicalism behind. I'm a proud Episcopalian now. Is that your dog?
I'm a proud, I'm a proud do- uh, Josh's dog noise now.
Is your dog The Exorcist? What the hell is happening?
I don't know. I just, this is my life right now. I'm locked in, I'm locked in here with them.
Josh, the face you made yesterday when your dog came into the shot, you, you looked so annoyed and it made me so happy.
But like, let me have five minutes, you know?
You got so mad. This was, this was literally Josh's face because he was so close to the camera. Like the dog barks and then he goes.
Oh, yeah, man. That, that, that used to be Mike Shue's face whenever I would say something stupid on W A S.
Rup together, uh, you guys are all from air, right?
Yeah.
Let me ask you this. When was the, have you guys ever had a Fluffin' Utter sandwich?
Oh, of course.
Okay. Cause Josh never had, what, like three, four months ago? Was that?
Yeah.
Oh, really, Josh?
What was that? It was whatever National Fluffin' Utter Day is, so like November?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the first time I ever heard of a Fluffin'.
Are you serious?
Ever had, uh, hash browns from McDonald's until it was like Thanksgiving.
Wow.
It's like some kind of Amish sex colony or something like.
I think it's just a Josh thing, actually.
It's just Josh. He's just fucking weird.
No.
He hates dogs and he doesn't eat hash browns.
No, cause it was National Fluffin' Utter Day. Mike Shue, Mr. Scary, they, they had like peanut butter in this weird white stuff. And they were like.
Are you fucking serious right now? Is this a real thing?
You didn't even know what fluff was, dude? I used to bring them to school.
I, I, I heard a fluff, but I didn't know it was marshmallow, but they kept saying Fluffin' Utter. And I was like, I don't think you can say that on the radio. What? What does that mean? And then they're like, are you, are you serious right now? And then.
How are you a producer on AAF? How is this a, how is this a reality?
That's why they shut down, Luke.
Cause Josh didn't know.
You know how? I want to contest and.
No, me and, me and Russ grew up, we were in air, but we were poor air. So our mom would, would make us peanut butter and then put those little market basket marshmallows on the sandwich and call it a Fluffin' Utter.
I love that you said poor air. Isn't that all of air?
You'd be surprised.
It's.
Rich air is rotten.
No, ri- rich air is anything that Calvin Moore owns and then the rest of it is poor air.
So downtown.
So all of downtown.
Downtown air is kind of, kind of happening right now. I don't live in air anymore. I'm a Pittsburgh native. Yeah, that's right. You better respect me.
Right.
Worcester, you're a she, I mean, Shu, you're a Worcester guy.
Yeah, I live in the trendy west end of Worcester. So, uh, I haven't had a crackhead come to my door for about four years now. So things are really up. Yeah.
Me and my wife went to Worcester for our anniversary this year. We went to The Fix. Have you ever been there?
Oh, yeah. Great burgers.
Fucking amazing burgers.
Place where you can choose your grind. Like I wanted to be like half pork and, and half Angus, stuff like that. Put a short rib on top of it with extra cheese. Yeah, place.
Yeah, cause in air, air, you can only get pizza and a haircut or Chinese food.
Not anymore. Or walk and roll.
Josh, downtown is all fancy since they filmed like three Netflix shows in.
Oh, yeah, The Society, The Society, and then one Hallmark thing. Yeah, cause we have New England studios right there. Have you guys been casting anything?
Castle Rock was, yeah, I've been waiting for my call too. What's that?
Castle Rock was an awesome show and that was filmed in.
Yeah, yeah.
Castle Rock's fucking incredible.
A lot of that was filmed in air, like.
What's Castle Rock?
I fucking hate you dude. Are you kidding me?
Is that, is it stupid?
Do you know who Stephen King is?
I do. He's the guy that hangs out in Maine.
Oh, God. Oh, Jesus, please help me with the rest of this podcast. Are you kidding me, dude? Cast, uh, I don't, it's not worth explaining it. It's not.
Castle Rock I thought was just like a gas station wine.
It always devolves into this. Josh says something like ridiculous. Ninety-five was also one twenty-eight. So when people would say one twenty-eight, he would have no idea what they were talking about, even though Rob on it a million times. And he said that on the air once and I was just like, are you kidding me right now? It's always the same reaction. That's gonna be a joke. And no, you know, but like, you guys put it perfectly. That's just Josh. He's just fucking weird.
You know, it's, there'd be things that I would just say that I would think was normal and that are normal. But then people would like flip out and be like, how do you not know this? Like, I don't know. I thought everyone had an iPhone, like.
I will say. Shine bright like a doofus.
I will say, I do have like a shit ton of respect for you guys who do like a lot of talk radio stuff. Because it's, it's something that everyone thinks it's easy. Oh, you just go on and you have a conversation, but especially when you're talking to strangers like you guys, especially like the last couple of years, you were talking to a lot of comedians, a lot of musicians. It's not, it's not just, you don't just sit down and talk about shit. You have to really plan for it. And there's those, those moments of silence that no one even thinks about. That can be absolutely terrifying and like shit, I gotta fill this up.
A two-second lull can feel like a month.
Oh, yeah.
You guys just talked to, I think the last, one of the last times I listened to your show, Mike, was, uh, you guys were talking to, it was, uh, Big Jay Okerson.
Oh, yeah.
I fucking love that guy. I, I like you guys, and you, you're a Dave Attell guy too, I think, right? Am I right about that?
Yeah, absolutely. And Big Jay Okerson is great, uh, when he's doing his act. But during interviews, he's pretty sedate.
Really?
You know, he's a pretty, he saves it. He's like, I think he's like a saver for the state guy.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, like quiet and he's very polite, you know, and then you see his act and he's like, you know, you expect to have this like obnoxious Philly guy talking to you, but, um, he's actually quite nice. Steve Byrne was kind of like that too. Steve Byrne, a little more mellow. You know, obviously you're on stage, you're in front of a crowd. There's more energy there. You guys know what that's like, but, um, you know, but there was like, you, you know, the best comedian we had in there, I don't know, Dustin Ybarra was pretty, was.
Dustin Ybarra is always, yeah, he's just.
I don't know who that is.
He was in, uh, We Bought A Zoo and the show Gotham and a few other things, but yeah.
He a Boston guy or a New York guy? Who is?
No, he's a, he's a LA comic.
Oh, okay.
Nice. I'll have to check him out. Yeah, I don't know.
Uh, who, oh, you know, who, what was the name of the guy that had the really weird face? The really weird smile?
Josh Owen? Is it Josh?
Oh, the other guy.
This is Josh's podcast too, and we're just gonna.
Yeah, the guy that looked like, he, he looked like a, uh.
He looked like a ventriloquist dummy when he smiled.
He looked like a feminine Zdeno Chara.
Yeah, yeah, so very effeminate Zdeno Chara. And like he was a clean comic. He didn't swear or anything, but he was hilarious. I can't believe I can't remember.
He sounded exactly like Jerry Seinfeld and he was like, I always open for Jerry Seinfeld.
You're talking about Ryan, you're talking about.
Hamilton.
Hamilton, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
He is really funny. He's, he's one of, I think, open book guys out there right now.
Who, who is the guy that, um, that's like friends with Paul McCartney now and he's a comedian? Yeah, oh, he was great.
Paul Macario?
He's from Providence and he works.
Hold on, Shu, you, you cut out for a second. You're saying Paul Macario?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he, he works on The Daily Show. Uh, isn't it The Daily Show, Josh?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, but he's got a great podcast too. He interviews some really great.
Isn't he the guy, and sorry, I know, I don't know if this is like good AAF lore or bad AF lore. Isn't he the guy that got Opie and Anthony fired? Like the second time in New York? When they were doing the Sex With Sam thing? Or is this something no one knows about except for me?
I don't, I thought they got in trouble because they caught two people having sex in a church.
Yeah.
They did, but Paul Macario, I believe was the guy they sent to the church to interview them and encouraged them to do anal in the church.
Wow, I didn't know that.
I doubt, I might be wrong.
We would have definitely talked to him about that if we knew about.
Wait, I mean.
Bar, I remember sitting in my driveway. I got home and I sat in my driveway for almost an hour, listening to that. Cause I was just so riveted to, these people are doing like penetration all over Manhattan. You know, and when they got busted in that church and you could just hear the energy studio just completely leave. It was like the air out of a balloon and they were just going like, okay, alright. Basically, we're dead. We're gonna go to, right now. And it was some of the best radio I've heard in my life. That was a great. right now. And it was some of the best radio I've heard in my life. That was a great bit. Fortunately, like the great bit they did with Mayor Menino.
Menino, yeah.
Florida, you know, they got fired for it, but you know, it was great.
Did you know those guys, Mike?
No, I never, I, I started working there, uh, shortly after they got fired. So Carrie had just moved to nights, Rocco and Birds, he moved to afternoons. And then a few months later, I, I showed up and they mercifully hired me. Um, but I never met those guys.
But before you guys went off the air or that we went off the air, you, uh, you gave it back to, uh, Anthony. You announced his death.
I just, before we talked to him, I said, yeah, I guess this is crazy. We're getting news on this thing, but, uh, Anthony Kumia from Opie and Anthony has died in a car accident in Florida. And, uh, apparently driving with a Haitian hooker. You know, it's just exactly what he said about Menino.
Oh, my God.
Few times and he's, he's a really nice guy. Uh, I've never talked to Opie though, but they were great. I mean, I stole, when I worked in Richmond, Virginia, I stole a ton of material from Opie and Anthony. I mean, it was such great stuff. I was like, we gotta try this out here, you know, but they're, they're one of the greatest ever.
Anthony came in when we were doing the, when I was on the Matty and Nick show and he just like, he came in the back and it was like an hour before the show and he just like talked to me for like an hour and he's just like such a, I was expecting him to be a little standoffish or something. But he was, he's just such an awesome fucking dude and he's just hilarious.
It's because you look like a young girl. So he was excited to talk to you.
It was my forehead.
No, I, I got, I got way, way into Opie and Anthony. Ironically, the week before Anthony got fired from Opie and Anthony on Sirius, I like got wicked into them. Like I was listening to old shit on YouTube, all the shit they did with Rogan and obviously Norton and Patrice. And then, uh, I was like, I'm, you know what? I'm gonna check these guys out live. And the day I checked them out live was the day before Anthony got fired for taking pictures in Times Square or whatever the hell he was doing.
Oh, my God. That's like right around when I really got in, into them too. And it was crazy to have Anthony like come back to the WAF studio. And I was like, what is happening right now? Like I'm in the WAF studio with Anthony who famously got fired from here and went on to like make millions at Sirius. And it was just like.
I, I didn't know he came to you guys' studio. That's, is that what you were saying earlier? Okay.
Yeah, he came in when, uh, Matty and Nick were still on the air and it was just, it was like blowing my mind. I was like, am I in the Twilight Zone right now? Like
That's weird.
It's just weird. Like the, like people you grow up listening to. Like we were talking about when Tom Hamilton came in the studio that day and Carrie was saying like, I grew up listening to you and AF and then now here we are like AF is going off the air and you're here, I'm on the air. Like who, who are some of the people that you guys got to work with? I know that you kind of opened for Bob Dylan, but like, didn't you like work with ZZ Top and stuff too? Like who's, who's some of the people that you got to be on the same bill with that you're like, I can't believe that I'm like even here right now.
Uh, probably the first, and I'm sure Russ will agree with me, was Sturgill. But I mean, there's been a, there's been a few, but Sturgill was a big one for me. And then Old Crow was big. I don't know, Russ, you probably have a better.
Well, I mean, just seeing, just like when Dylan happened, that was really big. Even though we were just doing the side stage thing, it was like having, like we, we, every time we did that thing, we got a br, like a, like a bracelet and like paperwork that said like our name and Bob Dylan's name. And like just having a pass with something like that was like really just pretty wild, you know? Um,
I think I still have mine.
Yeah, I still have my shit too, but, um, so that was big. Old Crow was awesome. Also dude, Three Dog Night, we opened for
Yeah.
Like we actually opened for them though. We like got to hang out with them. Um, and they were some of the sweetest guys and they're like in their fucking seventies and they still sing like birds, like their, their harmonies were incredible. Uh, Danny Hutton, like one of the lead singers, he complimented our harmonies, which was like
So fucking cool.
When the lead singer of fucking Three Dog Night compliments your harmonies, that's, that's cool. You know what I mean? Um, and Old Crow Medicine Show.
I will say, Russ, if you don't mind me interrupting you, the, probably the weirdest, and I'm sure you'll agree with me, you already know where I'm going, is we got somehow put on a bill with Third Eye Blind.
Yeah, I was getting there and, and it was the worst fucking thing.
We Third Eye Blind and Twenty One Pilots. So it's like
No, it's not. Okay. So Josh, Josh, hold on, hold on, Josh. So listen, listen, if you, if you don't think I cried to jumper a time or two in my youth. Okay, but, but so anyway, so it's us, like kind of an America, Americana band. And then who was the other band, Russ, that popped on with us?
Oh, man.
Oh, Brand New.
Tanker.
Oh, I would love Brand New. Are you fucking kidding me? I don't care if that guy had a hit on me. I would have been all about that. But no.
Ew.
It was us, this band Tankred, who was like kind of a more like metal harder band and then Third Eye Blind. So we played in Providence and then up in Portland with them. We did like a, like just like a two day mini run and, um, this is, this is still the funniest fucking thing ever in my life. This was two, three, I think it was three years ago, Russ, whatever it was.
Yeah, it was like
Twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. And so we're there, we sound check and we're talking with the band, that band Tankred, we're just talking about different shows we played, cities we played, blah, 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 like opener band shit. And Third Eye Blind is nowhere to be seen. And then we find out they're all there except for the lead singer who shows up on his own in like a, like a separate plane or whatever. And again, this is all hearsay. We don't know if, if any of this is true, but then, so we play.
No, we know some that's true.
All right. Hold on, I'm trying to make it alleged for whoever's listening to this.
I don't give a shit. Fuck Third Eye Blind, dude.
Okay, no, dude. They were very nice. Shut up, dude.
They were not. No, they were not.
Listen, anyway.
Am I gonna burn a Third Eye Blind bridge? I don't give a fuck.
I wish he would step back from that ledge, my friend, okay?
Listen to them anymore. They're, they're the fucking worst.
And
Okay, anyway. Maybe not the other band members because all the other original band members are left and I'm pretty sure are, this is, might be alleged. But I'm pretty sure that they're suing fucking Steven for being a douchebag and like fucking them over because
So any
And I Googled it later on. You know how like Google finishes things for you? Cause I was gonna try to give him the benefit of the doubt.
No, you weren't. Go ahead.
I was originally, but the, the, one of the first things that popped up was I started typing in Steven from Third Eye Blind and it was like douchebag. And it like had article after article about how he's like the worst guy in the industry to work with and
It's like when you type Josh Dolan into Google, it's the same thing. It's so weird. Josh, I feel so bad. I keep doing it. I don't know why.
No, it's okay. We'll fight later.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay. So anyway, the moral of the story is, or more, whatever. We, we play, it went great. The second band played, it went great. And Third Eye Blind goes, and everyone's pumped like, you know, everyone's like, yeah, fucking crystal meth and whatever. And then, uh, the lead singer comes out. First of all, we're all pushed way to the side. The green room was fine. And then once the lead singer came out, everyone was asked to like part like the Red Sea. Because this guy's super special and he came out in Providence. I'm not lying. He was wearing JNCO jeans in twenty seventeen. He was wearing JNCO jeans.
No.
And not ironically.
And he had like a, 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 like a, like a sweatshirt with like the
I thought you were gonna say a swastika.
No, like the front pocket and a hoodie, but no sleeves.
Swastika would have been less offensive.
It would have been, yeah. And dude, it was just the worst. And he had this whole like speech, like he had this whole speech about like, ah, it's like right now, it's like you're, you're in the moment. Like, don't let it pass you by. It's like this, it's like and like, and then he's made the same exact fucking speech the next night. Like it was his same moment, the same exact speech. Yeah.
So it was on purpose?
Yeah. Oh, totally. And dude, there was other shit. Like there was like, there was, yeah, there was stuff. I, I, ask me another time. I'll tell you the actual stories. Cause he was the worst. And, and then I, I worked with a guy who was a limo driver, like around that time, like around late nineties-ish. And, uh, he drove them and he said the same thing that like they were just the biggest douchebags. And like when they got in the limo, he like picked them up at Logan or whatever. And when they got in, he just basically was doing the like, oh, hey guys, um, whatever, just the basic like hello, I'm your driver. And he couldn't even get a word out before they were putting up the like divider. It was like, hey, guys.
That's kind of a power move though. I kind of respect that.
It's kind of like a Mike Myers movie, like, uh huh.
Yeah.
Hey, um, hey, I assure you that, um, I don't think you'll be burning any bridges because this is the Breaking the Ice podcast and the only people are probably John Bomb, his aunt Dee, and maybe your uncle Doug.
Oh, she, I don't think Uncle Doug would listen to this one.
No, but our Aunt Joanne is a big fan of the Breaking the Ice podcast. So hey, Aunt Joanne.
Yeah.
Joanne.
Yeah, no, well, that's, that's cool that, uh, so Mike, are you, you're, you've been doing a lot of these now with Josh. What, what do you, what's your, what, like now that everything has happened? What's going on? Where are you doing this with Josh regularly? Is this like? I'm, I'm just curious where, where you're headed.
What Russ, what Russ is trying to say is Josh making you do this against your will, like
I just wanna make sure you're okay. Yeah, I just wanna make sure you're okay.
I've been blinking in Morse code the whole
Damn it.
Help me. Help me. Josh is making No, you know, Josh had this podcast. He wanted to start it up again after, you know, they shut the station down. I said, sure, what the hell? You know, we were already working together and I enjoy working with Josh, you know, even though it doesn't really sound that way, but you know, he's got pictures of me and animals and
And I'm shopping the Miranda Netflix.
Yeah. Doing Pornhub. Part, we could have a whole nother channel, fat Asian porn with animals. You know, that's a whole worry that could, you know, maybe you guys, you know, since you're hurting, you know, these days for business, maybe get into the porn industry because you know, maybe people are looking for Americana porn. I haven't seen.
You know, weirdly, it was weird that you brought that up because Russ actually has a picture of him holding, uh, Josh, uh, he's got on a leash and he's got a neck thing similar to the Carol Baskin and her husband picture.
You, you leaked that, Russ?
It wasn't me, man.
Fuck, dude.
That is disturbing.
All right. It's one of the best pictures on the internet right now.
I, I gotta, I gotta bug out here, guys. I'm really sorry, but my daughter has, you know, every, every kid's getting homeschooled right now.
Yeah.
And they're getting work from their teachers and stuff and uh, sometimes the emails and stuff doesn't work. So my, my daughter got a week's worth of homework just today that she has to turn so I gotta go do it for her because that's the kind of dad I am.
That's awesome. Good dad.
Really like talking to you guys. This is awesome. And, uh, you know, thanks to your, your uncle Doug, I discovered your music. And, uh, so and next time you see him, tell him.
Yeah, before we go, you guys are, uh, you guys have a, uh, single coming out or it's already out?
It's out.
It just came out.
It's out.
It's called Forget Me Not. You can find it on Spotify, YouTube, Apple Music title, if you still do that or uh, just look, look for Town Meeting, Forget Me Not. It's all over the place. It's, uh, one of my favorite songs we did. Yeah. And, uh, Josh and
Patreon?
We have a Patreon, patreon.com slash Town Meeting, even literally even two bucks a month. It helps us immensely. So. Um, and Josh and Mike, thank you guys so much. Mike, for real, like you're one of my favorite people. I grew up listening to you, not grew up, but like 10 years ago, I listened to you. And, uh, I really, uh, I, I still listen to you guys, even if it's the latter days. So this is kind of an honor for me to do. So thank you.
Well, hey, when, when this is all over, let's have a Breaking the Ice concert.
Yeah.
Hell, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Here and, uh, and hot dogs.
Hell, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'm way down.
For everybody.
My God.
And let's, uh, let's, let's do this again sometime, another crossover.